Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is April 24, 2018. Time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
Let's lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you here for that? Thank you. Please lead us.
Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. Once again, we're thankful, Lord, for this mayor and city council, how they've worked together. And thank you, Lord, for this great little town that's had its growing pains. I'm thankful of all the places in the world you called me here 17 years ago. And we're praying that your spirit would touch us and give us special wisdom and give this council and this mayor direction in all our decisions that affect us, Lord. And bless this town with your peace and bless this town with your special, Lord, guidance that in the years ahead, my children can enjoy being a resident of Riverbank, California, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Nicely done. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barber Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There'll be some changes to the agenda. Item 6.1, the LRA Budget Review will be conducted at a later meeting. And in item 3. B, the date is a review of the minutes will be the 10th of April. Conflicts of interest. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll move forward to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person shall speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments? I thought the firemen would invite us to an opening. Item 3, Consent Calendar, consisting of item 3A, Wave Readings. Item 3B, Approval of the April 10, 2018 City Council on Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Item 3C, Recommend Approval of a Resolution Accepting the List of Senate Bill SB1-Funded Projects to Be Submitted to the California Transportation Commission (CTC) for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. Is there anyone wishing to discuss or pool any of the items? Anyone from the public wishing to pool or seeing none? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the consent calendar as read.
I second the motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendars.
Council Authority Members Fosse. Yes. Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barber Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, A Resolution Authorizing a 3.5% Inflationary Adjustment Increase to the City of Riverbank System Development Fees Based on the Construction Cost Index to be Effective June 23, 2018.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Tonight, we are looking to request an increase to our system development fee based on the inflationary adjustment that was approved in resolution in 2015. Just to remind the city council and for our residents, a system development fee is a charge by local governments that helps to fund and to mitigate deconstruction costs for needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements. The purpose of this fee is to defray any or all, any portion of the costs of public facilities that's related to a particular development project. Our last comprehensive fee update was in March of 2015. This update included the addition of projects that will benefit future developments, particularly on the east and west side where we have new development occurring. Resolution 2015-021 adopted these new fees and also authorizes the council to include an inflationary adjustment based on the Construction Cost Index by City, which is published by the Engineering News Record. For 2017, this CCI number was 3.5%, which is the amount that we're recommending that the fees be increased by. And so, the proposed fees for residential are listed here and are listed in the staff report. I'm going to move forward to the item that shows per dwelling unit or for non-residential per square feet what that increase actually looks like in total. So for residential, for clustered rural, the total increase will go up to 1,263. For some lower density, it'll increase by $931. For some non-residential, like our community commercial, that per square foot increase is 51 cents. And in looking at our fees compared to other jurisdictions, obviously, the fees vary from city to city because of the projects that they have included. Our fees are still fairly reasonable. Other agencies also do similar cost increases, usually annually. We have not done that on an annual basis, but it will be something that we'll be doing moving forward. So tonight, we're recommending that you consider adopting this resolution, which will authorize a 3.5% increase to our 2015 system development fees. Now available for any questions?
When we have a CFD and we have system development fees, if they're paying for, let's say, the streets and roads that we're doing, do we look at adjusting their CFD or is that going to be above and beyond that?
So just to remind you, the CFD will cover the maintenance, but it will not cover the construction. So the S-, the system development fees or the SDF fees are intended to cover the construction of those improvements, whereas the CFD or Community Facilities District is intended to cover the maintenance of those improvements moving forward.
And we adjust the CFD as maintenance comes around?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion that we accept the item as proposed.
I second the motion. Council Members Fosse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barber Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving to item 6.2, A Resolution Authorizing an Animal Control Services Agreement with the City of Oakdale to Provide Animal Control Services in the City of Riverbank and its execution by the city manager or assistant city manager.
So mayor and council, for approximately seven to eight months, staff and I have been working on this negotiations with the City of Oakdale to renew our animal control services contract that we currently have with them. We have been with the City of Oakdale since 2009, and we're now reaching the point where some of the equipment that has been, was originally purchased is starting to phase out or give out, as well as needing to take into consideration some cost increases for operations of the shelter and other items. So the contract that we have proposed for you is going to run for two years, from July 2018 to June 2020. As I mentioned, the current contract began in 2009. Our animal control officer provides 32 hours of service to Riverbank, so they are considered a part-time employee. All personnel and related maintenance and operations costs are paid for by the city. So we do pay for a portion of a part-time shelter attendant. We have the dispatch services that we can take advantage of and other operating costs like the pet food and supplies and the vehicle maintenance on the cars and trainings, et cetera. Now, the proposed contract, we're looking to increase the animal control officer's hours to full-time status, so we would be adding eight hours. This employee already receives PERS retirement and health insurance, so we wouldn't see any additional costs there. They've also increased the operational costs, since those haven't been increased since the original contract in 2009. And then, this fiscal year, we'll be looking to purchase an AC transportation box to replace the old box. So this transportation box is the box where they place the animals in and transport them over to the shelter. The AC portion of it has been failing, and so sometimes the animals are in a condition where they're getting overheated, and by the time they get to Oakdale, particularly during the summer, they've had some difficulties getting them there in a timely manner. So we will be looking to replace the box this year at an approximate cost of $20,000. Next fiscal year, we're going to begin a vehicle replacement fund for the future replacement of the vehicle that they currently have. The vehicle was purchased back in 2009, but it was a 2008 model, so it is 10 years old. And so, we'll be looking to replace that probably within the next year or two. They've been able to maintain it fairly well at the City of Oakdale, so we haven't had to do any major reconstruction or any major repairs to it, so we're confident it'll last at least another two years. But in the meantime, with the City of Oakdale, we'd like to build up a bit of a reserve so that the funding of the replacement doesn't have to come all in one fiscal year for the city. So we'll be forwarding about $20,000 a year towards that purchase. And so, our recommendation for tonight is the consideration of this resolution, which would authorize the signature on the new contract with the City of Oakdale for the services for the next two years. The City of Oakdale did hold their meeting where they considered this, and it was approved, so we're now bringing it forward to our council for consideration.
What is our total cost?
So the total cost for the first fiscal year will be $196,000 in operational costs and then $20,000 for the vehicle replacement. Correct. So part of the cost that's included in the staff report includes the replacement of the transportation box, which will happen this fiscal year. These new fees that we'll be paying will be, will begin as of July 1, 2018.
In the staff report, it has an annual cost summary?
Correct.
Is this not split?
So if, so it's a total of $139,000 for the animal control officer, shelter attendant, dispatch service, and the supervisor, plus the addition of the operating costs. So it shows a total combined in the staff report of $215,000. $20,000 of that will go towards funding of the transportation box, which is a one-time cost this fiscal year.
So this is just our share?
That is just our share of the staffing that's needed there. So we do pay for a portion of that, plus the operation costs.
It would be nice next time if it would say that that was our share instead of the total cost. Or maybe a total cost and our share. Because I thought this was the whole cost to run it.
No, that is just the City of Riverbanks' share.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a question, comment. At one time, there were complaints that they weren't responding quick enough to our city, so do we know if service has improved or?
Service has improved. What we had was that there was a part-time shelter attendant position that used to work on the weekends, and so that would make our employee available to take calls at that time. Or when they would come in on Mondays, they wouldn't have to clean up because there would be somebody there cleaning on the weekends. For some reason, that employee left, they hired a new employee, and this new employee did not want to work weekends. And so, that required our animal control officer to assist their staff in cleaning anything from the weekend. And so now, they've reverted back to having somebody work weekends, leaving our officer available for calls.
I have another question. In the staff report, it says a 40-hour-a-week full-time animal control officer assigned primarily to Riverbank?
Yes.
Does that not mean 40 hours to Riverbank?
Yes, it is.
So we're not sharing it?
No, we're not.
Okay. Thank you.
I personally think that even though there's a cost here, we're saving some money by having PERS paid for by Oakdale. So we're only paying the salary of the gentleman or the gal that does it. And I've seen a lot more animals running around as the city grows, more people are getting them. I just picked up my first couple not too long ago. So I think this isn't a bad thing, because as we grow, we're going to need those extra hours that this employee will have.
What did we pay in services last year?
We budgeted this year $165,000. So as I mentioned, they haven't increased any of their operational costs to us since 2009, and so they have factored that in.
Okay. Thank you. Leanne, do you have any?
No, I'm good.
Anyone from the public wishes a comment? Seeing none, I bring it back for either further discussion or for recommendation. I move we accept item 6.3.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 6.3.
Council Members Fosse.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barber Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Items and staff comments.
There are no staff comments tonight.
Item 7.2, Council, Council Member Fosse.
No comments tonight.
Council Member Campbell.
I'd like to say a couple of things. One, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago of the Adduct Illegal Fireworks Committee. Council Member Fosse and myself met for about an hour and a half with different citizens from different parts of the community. And through their efforts, along with the police chief and Maricela, who represented the city also, we've got enough material together that we're going to start building on it and come up with some ordinance that will possibly help us control illegal fireworks better in the future. And they'll be brought before the council after the rough drafts are completed. Likewise, Council Member Martinez and I spent a day up in Sacramento on Legislation Day. We met with Senator Galliani and also Assemblyman Flora, talking about different issues and whatnot and getting a firsthand look and discussion with them. And I'd also like to thank Churchill White, because they gave us a guide all day long, and Josiah did a very good job. Thank you.
Ready for me?
Yes.
On Saturday, April 28, from 1 to 4, the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection Service, District, excuse me, Station 20, there we go, Station 24, will hold its dedication in open house. It's over in Waterford on 129 East Street in Waterford. So if you guys can make it over there and check out their new station, that'd be awesome.
Vice Mayor.
Just want to mention a couple of things that on, well, this, earlier this month, I attended the Community Policy Committee meeting for the California League of Cities, and our focus was on state fire response and disaster relief policy. We also discussed a lot about homelessness and what the other cities are trying to do as far as putting their policies together to help out the homeless. And also, we had some discussion about libraries and future funding. And also, I attended, along with our, with Norma from the city. We went to the Stanislaus County Disaster Council that looks at emergency operations and support functions and preparedness, so that we do have a emergency preparedness plan here for the city, and we're also working on hazardous materials. And we'll be bringing that forward for everyone to take a look at later in the year. Thank you.
Thank you. I too went to the Environmental Quality Committee for the league, and as usual, the state of California is spending lots of money without adequate funding, so we should be getting the impacts on that in the next couple of years. One of the items was housing issues for homeless, and we have been meeting the city with the Housing Authority and also the Stanislaus County Housing Authority, and we're looking at ways of producing six or seven units for homeless vets. It'll be within the city, and we're working that. We're looking at for grants as well as monies that we have available within our housing. One thing that we have to truly get our hands around is the massive debt that CalPERS is continuing to grow. They gave a report another 8 to 10 billion was lost last year. And that 8 to 10 billion dollars is truly going to affect every employee. We're going to have to start asking the employees, you know, how do you want to fund your retirement? This right here is not going to work. I don't know if we could, since they're inadequate in maintaining the money, if we could say, "You're not doing what you said you were going to. We're looking elsewhere without penalties." No, I guess not. I would like the staff to take a look at who could do a spatial analysis and get that going, because we really, truly need it. We're out of space, and we're short seven people for the staff. Chief, you're almost out of space, and you need seven more officers before we start growing. So we truly need a spatial analysis. With that, we go to closed session, consisting of item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.18. Agency Negotiator, Maricela Garcia, Assistant City Manager. Property Negotiator, Ametis Inc. Item 8.2, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code 54957.6. Agency Representative, Maricela Garcia, Assistant City Manager. Employees Organization, Miscellaneous Employees Mid-Management Bargaining Units. The public has the capability of speaking on five minutes on any of these items. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak before we go to closed session? Seeing none, we go to closed session. Seeing none, we go to closed session.
You're ours now, Shane. City of Riverbank Regular City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board meeting for April 24th is reconvened. Report from closed session, item 9.1. Report from closed session, item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report from closed session on item 8.2, Conference with Labor Negotiators, miscellaneous and mid-management bargaining units. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, the city council meeting is now adjourned. Not with those two.